Excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and speaker request cards are located on the counter in the lobby outside of the council chambers. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the officer. You may check the “I do not wish to speak” option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don’t appear on tonight’s formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it’s time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You’ll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meeting stream live on Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and online at goodyearaz.gov. Follow the city’s social media pages so you don’t miss out on all that’s happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it’s a great time to be in Goodyear.
I’d like to call the regular meeting to order for January 9th. Looking around the table, everybody’s here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Where’s the flag? Behind us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Almighty Father, please provide direction and wisdom to all of us around this table that we make good decisions for the community. Also, in an environment, unfortunately, throughout this world or in this country, a lot of discourse, please provide a calming hand to all of us so that we can all work together for the betterment of the community. And please keep out of harms way all our men in uniform that are serving here and abroad that they’re safe and return home. Thank you, in your name, amen. All right, city clerk will now call forward some folks that weren’t able to be here last month that get sworn in, so they may be—yeah?
To the roll.
Hmm? Oh, the roll? I thought we already did that.
We did for the last one.
Oh. Who’s here? City clerk? Everybody?
Everybody’s here.
Everybody’s here? All right, we’re good? All right. Now, you call forward some folks that aren’t able to be here last month that get sworn in so that they may serve on a couple of our boards, committees, commissions.
Can I have Tamara Floyd, Joseph Moreno, Susan Schmelzer, Gerald Wilson, and Lisa Paulos, please come forward? And if you could just line up right through here, please. We’ve got our new workspace right now, so this is how we’ve—we’re kind of making it work. So if you could repeat after me, raise your right hand first, and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I state your name.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of couns—oh, not council members. Too used to doing that one. Of board member, according to the best of my ability. So I do affirm. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Did you have time to fill out your forms? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. You guys can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you very much.
We have one communication item tonight. We are going to recognize the artists that did the work on our 10 Heart of Goodyear hearts and that we see all over Goodyear. Please come on up and introduce yourself.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name’s Lane Ruiz, and I’m the Arts and Culture Coordinator here at the city of Goodyear. I’m so excited to be here today to honor and recognize our artists that joined us for the Heart of Goodyear Public Art Project. These hearts may look familiar to you guys as they’re not new to the city of Goodyear. These 10 fiberglass hearts were originally installed throughout the city in celebration of the Goodyear 75th anniversary. When we received such great feedback, we knew this was going to be an ongoing project. These hearts have been refreshed with new Goodyear the Beautiful themed artwork. With me today, I would like to recognize the artists. Can I have Lykan Shepherd join me? Brigitte DeMarco? Deborah Goli? Connie Whitlock and Marty Wolf? And Eva Kobaka Bugala?
All right.
I would also like to recognize the artists that were not able to make it here tonight. We have Lucretia Torva, Jessie Kerr, Ariel Fan, and Maria Jaha. These artists were tasked with engaging with the community to drive their design on what makes Goodyear beautiful to those who live, work, and play here. Some artists engaged with park users, others with friends and family in the community, and some even through social media. Through these interactions, it was apparent that residents wanted something symbolic, colorful, and picture-worthy in our parks. And boy, did our artists deliver on that. I am honored to be up here today with these amazing artists that brought this project to life. You are all so talented, and it’s been a joy to hear all of the great feedback we’ve Thank you again to the artists that joined us here today and those that weren’t able to make it here. Also, thank you to the Arts and Culture Commission for the direction that they provide for us. And thank you again to Mayor and Council for your continued support in arts and culture in Goodyear. That concludes my presentation.
Let’s give them a hand. Does anybody like to say something? Go ahead.
Absolutely beautiful. Just beautiful, fun, powerful, just beautiful. And I’m new and I don’t have my mic on.
Did you hear me? I said absolutely beautiful, colorful, fun, just—you guys—outstanding, beautiful.
Go ahead, councilmember Stip.
Yeah, it’s not too hard, not too soft. Everyone—I’m going to look at Guileen between the little crack between you guys. Everyone knows I am not the art person on council, but I can tell you unequivocally that everybody in the community loves these hearts. So your work will be seen by countless numbers of people who sometimes just go to visit the visit the hearts. And that is such a wonderful thing. I know we originally intended for these to be temporary, and I am so thankful that they are a permanent part of our art displays throughout the community, and hopefully that that is something that will continue to go on. So you guys have a great legacy. So thank you very, very much.
Councilmember Hampton.
Yeah, thank you also. I saw everybody—well, some of you painting out there as well. I know the residents, councilmembers at this point are very—they really enjoy this artwork, and they’re very concerned when they all went white. And they thought there was vandalism, they thought something something really went bad in the community. So it was really nice to see that they got repainted, and they look great. I really appreciate all the hard work that you put into them. So thank you for bringing more culture and creativity to our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Well, I missed the Saturday Night Fever. Whoever did that? Who did that? Do you know? It was at the library, the old library.
Lucretia Torva painted that one, but she also participated this time and did the new design.
Well, the Saturday Night Live Fever thing was just awesome. Everybody loved that. We had a contest if people could decide who it was and what it was, and it was really a lot of fun. But this is really lovely. We thank y’all all so much, but y’all are all so talented. And I’m assuming that once a year, you’re going to redo them? Or you’re just going to leave these here like this forever? Or how are we going to do that?
We are hoping that these will withstand the weather. They’re going to be sealed, so we’ll see how long they last, hopefully like three to five years. But we want this artwork to last.
Wonderful. We have one here at City Hall somewhere?
We have two in Bullard Wash.
Oh, in the Bullard Wash?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay. Vice Mayor Cano.
Well, I’m really thankful for our very dynamic and engaged Arts and Culture Commission and how they recruited you for these projects. And thank you for bringing such a pop of art to our community. I love public art. I think it’s just enriches our community, it enhances our quality of life. And so thank you for leaving your artistic abilities for us to enjoy.
You got it?
I got it.
Go ahead.
I want to say thank you to you all. They’re absolutely gorgeous. And I don’t know, they just make my day when I drive by those or the traffic cabinets. You wouldn’t think that’d be an exciting thing, but sometimes if you’re just in a bad mood or you’re just driving around, you see that beautiful color. It just really sets your mood, and it’s just gorgeous. I hope as we continue to expand those, as we expand the city to other areas and get new building, that we continue to bring these in the traffic cabinets, because it’s just so nice to have that color. And I appreciate our Arts and Culture Committee and that we rejoin them so that they will stay fresh and new. Because I’ve been to some cities where they did them and they just kind of let them go, and I appreciate that we see new and vibrant designs. So thank you, and you’re all so talented. So thank you.
Thank you. You know, there’s not a whole lot to add after that, except being a person who specializes in numbers, I’m fascinated with this art and the art that you do, because I can’t, all right? So the best I can do is stick men, and sometimes they don’t really look very well at all. But, you know, I think back to the days when we, you know, kind of talked about covering the electrical boxes there at the lights, and, you know, we tried a few, and then we got a few more on there, and now we got them throughout the city. And, you know, it really, I think, adds value in this community. And some of the best things, and I’m going to knock on wood here, is that people leave them alone because they have such pride in this art that’s throughout this city. And I thank you for bringing that to this community, because it’s just gorgeous. And another hand for them. Now, it’s time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda items with the jurisdiction of this Goodyear City Council. Do we have anything?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Let’s see. Would the city clerk please read the consent items three through five by title only?
Number three, approval of minutes. Number four, approve the IGA with the City of Phoenix for grant administration for the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. Number five, adopt resolution number 2023-2287 authorizing the submission of an application for American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, pass-through funds to the Maricopa County Human Services Department, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute all documents relating to said application and authorizing the city manager or her designee to negotiate the terms of an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County and an agreement with Dominion Incorporated if grant funds are awarded.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would the city clerk please enter a motion? And City Council, please enter a motion in a second to approve items three through five. I see a motion in a second. Go ahead and open voting, please. Passes seven to zero. Next item up is business.
We’d like to remind council to wait for the motion in a second and for discussion. The only item on business is to consider adopting resolution—
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For those watching at home, I’m Jenna Carrico, Government Relations Manager for the city of Goodyear. Thank you for having me tonight to present the 2023 State and Federal Legislative Agenda. Today marks the opening day of the 56th Legislature First Regular Session, and each year I come before you to ask for approval of this agenda, which helps define the city’s legislative priorities and helps me when deciding on how to weigh in on a bill of interest at the state capitol. Today, we’ll go through a quick recap of a few of the hot topics from last session, get into how the election season changed things up for us, we’ll discuss the agenda itself and what to expect out of this session. I do have an opportunity for questions and discussion at the end, but please feel free to stop me at any time if you want to focus on something on a particular slide. Before we get into that, I always like to remind those in the audience and at home all of the different regional agencies you all are involved in outside of the legislature that helps our city remain strong regional partners. Mayor Pizzillo serves on the Executive Committee of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. This leadership role helps ensure Goodyear will have a seat at the table during the creation of the League’s policy development. He also serves on the Maricopa Association of Governments, what we call MAG, Regional Council, and serves as Goodyear’s representative on Luke West Valley Council, which meets quarterly to discuss the happenings of Luke Air Force Base and the surrounding community. Vice Mayor Cano serves on the West Smart Quality of Life Committee. Councilmember Loretano serves as the vice president of the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association and sits on MAG’s Domestic Violence Committee. Councilmember Campbell is actively involved at the National League of Cities level and also serves on MAG’s Human Services and Community Initiatives Committee. Councilmember Stip serves as the vice chair of the Valley Metro Board of Directors, chair of the Valley Metro Audit and Finance Subcommittee, and is our representative on the MAG Transportation Policy Committee. Councilmember Hampton serves on the MAG Economic Development Committee, and I know all of these are just a small taste of the committees, boards, and community initiatives our mayor and council contribute to. So thank you all. Getting into just a couple stats from the last two years, we see the numbers are fairly similar from 2021 to 2022, with the exception of no bill moratorium last year to force a budget to get done. That’s those 28 vetoed bills in 2021. We’ve had very long sessions going to the end of June the last two years with effective dates until late September, and I am predicting a very similar outcome for this year as well. It is likely we’ll see fewer bills introduced this year, as over a third of our legislature is brand-new. And I’ve heard many will want to hold back and get their bearings before taking on their So on this slide are a couple of our top priority issues from last session. And in a moment of dark humor, I almost copy and pasted this for a later slide showing the 2023 hot topics, because a lot of these will be back in some form. So Prop 400E, as you know, on July 6, Governor Ducey unexpectedly vetoed Representative Carroll’s House Bill 2685, which would have allowed Maricopa County voters the chance to decide the fate of the countywide transportation sales tax that we call Prop 400. The final version of the bill would have gone to county voters in March 2023, and if passed, become effective on January 1, 2026, upon the expiration of Prop 400 on December 31, 2025. Unfortunately, this veto will delay existing projects in Prop 400 that need the assurance that this tax will be continued for bonding approvals, as well as puts the region in a state of flux as we grapple with the possibility that the tax doesn’t get extended. And we will cover this more in a few slides. Zoning, permitting, and affordable housing. Over the last couple of years, we’ve seen more and more bills aimed at arbitrary deadlines for our permitting staff for how quickly they need to turn around permit reviews. And this last year, we saw the infamous House Bill 2674, the By Right Zoning Bill, that all of you were instrumental in killing, as many of you reached out to then Representative Kaiser to express your concerns. That bill turned into the interim-long study session that’s heard over 70 presenters, including our own Christopher Baker and Katie Wilkin, to learn more about the housing supply issue in our state. And we’ll get into those recommendations that the committee released last month in a couple of slides. Short-term rentals. At the final hour, cities and the short-term rental industry reached consensus on compromise language to address the myriad of short-term rental issues in the form of Senate Bill 1168. This compromise came with various moratorium agreements between the two sides: three years with no change to this law itself, five years with no attempts to repeal the short-term rental statutes altogether, but no moratorium for communities that wish to seek legislative approval to cap the percentages of short-term rentals in their communities, like we see in Sedona. There have been rumors that some communities want to see additional changes in the law despite these moratoriums, but what those look like is yet to be seen. And I do want to point out here, Mayor and Council, with your leadership, Goodyear was the first city in the state to adopt our ordinance in accordance with this new law, and we were looked at as an example, a positive example, for our neighboring communities. So you all should be very proud. Oh, one more. Revenue surplus and tax cuts. Of course, one of the reasons session was so long last year was the over $5 billion in one-time surplus members got to fight over, and we saw the recent change, the 2% flat income tax as a result of tax reform in the 2021 session. This year, we’ve seen an estimated $140 million in ongoing revenue surplus and about $2.5 billion in available one-time spending. Governor Hobbs will release her budget this Friday, where we expect she’ll include funding for estate-child tax credit, address housing issues, and boost education dollars. As you all know, election season took over most of our fall. With the unprecedented increase in in-person voting, it took weeks to count the final ballots across the state to declare winners in a number of close races. Ultimately, Senator Kelly retained his seat in the US Senate. We have a Democrat governor for the first time in almost 15 years, as well as narrow Democratic wins in a number of statewide offices, from Secretary of State to Attorney General. Despite this purple wave, the legislature maintained its slim Republican majority, 31-29 in the House and 16-14 in the Senate. With redistricting in the fall of 2021, Goodyear is now in Congressional Districts 7 and 9, represented by Rahul Ghurhalva and Paul Gosar. Congresswoman Lesko’s district is now more encompassed in the Northwest Valley, and I just want to highlight, we do appreciate her leadership and partnership over the years. And we, of course, still claim our statewide senators, Kirsten Sinema and Mark Kelly. With all of this change means new leadership in our legislature as well. Both previous leaders, Speaker Bowers and President Fan, will not be back at the legislature. So I won’t go through all of these, but of note, Senator Warren Peterson of Gilbert is now Senate President, and Representative Ben Toma of Peoria is Speaker. Goodyear’s LD 25 Senator Sina Kerr is Senate Majority Whip, and our LD 22 Representative Lupe Contreras is Assistant Democratic Leader in the House. And so same effect with redistricting. Goodyear is now in four legislative districts, mostly encompassed in Avondale, but some pockets of southeast Goodyear, Legislative District 22. We have Senator Eva Diaz, Representative Lupe Contreras, Representative Lisa Sun. Southern portion of our city, split at McDowell, Legislative District 23, Senator Brian Fernandez, Representative Mariana Sandoval, and Representative Michelle Pena. The northwest portion of our city, west of the 303, north of the 10, and mostly our Sadea neighborhood, is Legislative District 25, with Senators Sina Kerr, Representative Tim Dunn, and Representative Michael Carbone. North of McDowell, Legislative District 29, with Senators Janay Champ, Representative Steve Montenegro, and Representative Austin Smith. As you’ll see on this slide, these are our federal and state legislative principles that assist me and the team when deciding on how to weigh in on a bill at the state capitol. When Goodyear weighs in on a bill at the capitol, it is because it either aligns or threatens one of these main tenets. When bills drop that affect us, I send them out to our department directors and have those true experts weigh in on how something may impact their day-to-day operations. Every session, this average is close to about 300 bills. As you may suspect, the two principles most commonly discussed are protecting local control and local revenues. We’ll get into the next slide. We do anticipate, as you all know, a fight on protecting residential rental and food tax again this year. President Peterson has released a proposed tax plan, which would include elimination of the residential rental and food taxes. These taxes are only collected by local governments and would have no impact to the state’s coffers, which we do believe to be an overreach that will impact communities across the state. With over half of our general funds revenues from sales tax, chipping away at that inevitably impacts our ability to provide and maintain quality services. And for Goodyear, this would result in a starting impact of $10.3 million. We will be working with Governor Hobbs through the League to convey the importance of local decision-making when it comes to these tax decisions. Allowing the voters to decide the fate of Prop 400 extension, as I’ve already mentioned, this is critical to our region’s continued mobility and quality of life. In order to extend these critical infrastructure funds, we have to receive voter approval by November of 2024. And we are the only county in the state that has to receive legislative approval before placing it on the ballot for voter consideration. Over the last several years, the West Valley has been at the table with mayors and elected officials from across the county to negotiate and compromise on the Prop 400 extension plan, and we support it unchanged in its current form. But for Goodyear, we will depend on this tax extension to ensure the completion of the Loop 303 down to the MC85, and to begin construction on the State Route 30, which will be a much-needed I-10 reliever four miles south of the 10, so that arterial equivalent is about Broadway. And that first section of the freeway between the Loop 202 and 303 will be one of the first projects completed out the gate if the tax passes in 2026. So I regret to say, at this moment in time, there is no Republican legislator willing to introduce the proposal in the form Maricopa County mayors have approved it, but I do anticipate seeing a number of proposals that contain aspects of the plan, but that cut critical pieces of the bill, like light rail and even transit altogether. We are working with MAG, the business community, and legislators on the strategy moving forward, but at this point, it is yet to be definitively seen. Last, but certainly not least, we will likely see a number of proposals encompassing recommendations from now Senator Kaiser’s Housing Supply Study Committee. I sent the full list of recommendations on Friday for your review, so I just want to highlight a couple of them. But we heard often in this committee, as you know, an anti-city narrative, that we are slowing down review timelines or creating barriers to different types of development. And we have communicated to many legislators that this is not the case in Goodyear. It is no surprise that zoning reform was listed as the second recommendation of the committee. What that means is yet to be seen, but the League is working with Senator Kaiser to minimize the impact we have to protect our ability to plan in our own communities. And just to tie this slide together, we have been conveying the message that the collection of the residential rental tax serves as an incentive for local communities to rezone from commercial to multifamily and helps us combat that nimbism argument we hear from neighborhoods when they feel like these renters are paying their fair share for these services. I want to thank all of you for your attendance at the 2023 Legislative Outlook Breakfast last month. I have received positive feedback from a number of our legislators, who appreciated Goodyear being one of the first communities to reach out to them and show our support. You all make my job so much easier with your great reputations and legislative relationships, so thank you. In addition to this breakfast, we will be working with our lead staff to do another lead day at the capitol later this spring, and I would love to have you all there as well. If you have any other ideas, thoughts, or suggestions on how to best strengthen these relationships and get more involved, please never hesitate to let me know. And with that, I’ll open it up for any questions or discussion.
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, would the city clerk please read Resolution number 2023-2286 by title only?
Adopt Resolution number 2023-2286, adopting a 2023 State and Federal Legislative Agenda and providing authorization to the city manager or her designee to take action.
I see a motion in a second for Resolution 2023-2286. Seeing the motion in a second, open for council discussion. Any questions? Any discussion? Eh, can’t be that easy. Wait a minute, let me come up with something here. Any bills dropped yet?
Yes.
Hopefully all in the city’s favor?
Mayor and council, nothing too bad so far, but significantly fewer than normal this time of year. Last I checked this afternoon, we were about 53, and usually, when I did this last year, we were at about 280. So, yeah.
Ooh. That could be—that could be good news.
It could be. We have 41 new members, and 34 of those have never served before, so I think folks are just getting used to everything.
Okay. All right. Okay, then just real quick, any chance we can maybe get a meeting with the Senate President and maybe possibly the Speaker of the House, just to have a one-on-one? I'm not sure whether we will accomplish anything, but I always believe, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained, so if you can get something like that, I would be willing to sit down and talk to him.
Absolutely. We'll get working on that.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to thank you, Jenna, for a great presentation and also the work that you do to build relationships. You see, there's a big challenge with so many new legislature. And, and I mean, the number that represent the Goodyear has really increased as well, so it's a, a whole slew of new relationships to build, and just thank you for the work that you do to help us to foster those good, strong relationships. And big things, big issues to work on, but thank you for keeping us informed the way you do.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Loretano?
And I want to echo that, your hard work at the legislature, sometimes I think that's a thankless job. With the new legislatures, I think we talked about that maybe giving them a tour, showing them what we spend the money on, the, the fire stations, and letting them know how much it costs, because it's easy to say how much, you know, a fire station costs, then you walk them through what the fire station has, and for the cancer, and how it, we keep them separate, and what all the new advances in and where we're spending the money. Perhaps since we have so many, we could kind of give them a Goodyear 101 course of our city, because most of them, I believe, do not live in the city. So I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, no further discussion. Can you go ahead and open the voting? Passes seven to zero. Thank you. Does City Council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events or requests for future items? Councilmember Stip.
You know, I didn't want to make too many comments tonight of the induction, but I would like to welcome Vicki to the, to the council and congratulate Brandon, Wally, and the mayor on their, on their reelections. Big night we had last week, and I did not want to infringe on anyone else's thunder, but I also did not want it to go unrecognized. In addition to, now back to Councilmember Hampton, his term as the Vice Mayor, appreciate his time and, and service during, for, for us, which was a difficult time, so thank you very much.
Anything else? Yeah, thank you for those, for those kind words, and one of the things I always think that we've got going for us is a very cohesive council that works together for the betterment of the community at large. We've been fortunate, unfortunately, are some councils that don't work like that and have issues, but I'm very appreciative of all of everybody here around this table to work for the betterment. And again, we've got a great working unit. Can't say nothing, except we are the best, all right? With that, does the manager have anything to report? I truly believe that.
There we go. The City of Goodyear, we organized a pop-up food truck last Friday to commemorate the final weekend of the holiday decorations. If you saw, the Christmas tree's gone, it's very sad. But we had a great event with more than 600 people in attendance, and the food trucks and the ice skating rink all sold out. The community really enjoyed that.
That's awesome.
I'd also like to officially welcome Andy Granger, who is our new Deputy City Manager, joining us for the first time tonight. Andy has more than 20 years in local government, having managed nearly every department function. And for the past five years, he's been serving as Deputy City Manager for our neighboring city of Peoria. He has a great depth of knowledge, and I know will, will hit the ground running. I also wanted to thank Paul, who's here in uniform, which feels so strange. It was reverting back to, back to Chief Luizy, but I wanted to thank Paul, but also Tim, who stepped up and filled in over the past year. All that they've done for the Goodyear team does not go unnoticed, and we couldn't have done it without them, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. The next meeting will be a regular meeting on January 23rd at 5:00 PM. Just another reminder, everything's going to be in here while they work back over in there, okay? No further business discussed, this meeting is adjourned.